If I get some of my members of City Council here, we'll get this meeting started. And we can get our police officers back on the streets. So the faster the better, right? All right. I'm gonna call this meeting into order. I'm gonna welcome you to the Montclair City Council. And at this time, we'll begin the meeting with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. And I want to ask the city clerk to introduce those persons.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Police Department Chaplain Vicky Brobeck. And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Rue.
Okay, please stand.
Father, I thank you that you are compassionate and full of mercy. Therefore, I pray that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ would impart wisdom and the spirit of revelation to know you. I pray that we will continually experience the immeasurable greatness of your power made available to us through faith. We would not forget those who are struggling and who are grieving at this time. You are close to the brokenhearted, comfort their hearts, and let your peace surround them. Father, we are thankful for our new police officers. And we ask you to bless them with strength and grace and mercy and wisdom, and grant them a successful career here in the city. At this Christmas season, may our hearts be warmed by your tender mercies. May our lives be motivated by a secure faith that is anchored in hope. And may the joy of your salvation permeate and restore our souls. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join with me as we salute the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez. Councilmember Martinez, here. Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Dutre.
Your Trey's here, and there was rumor going around that I was not gonna be here today. So I'm sorry to tell you that I'm here today. So hopefully, I'll make this an exciting meeting tonight. But nevertheless, we're gonna move down to presentations. And I'm gonna start with an introduction of new police officers first. And I'm gonna ask the chief to please come down to do the introductions. And councilmembers will join me here at the bottom.
Good evening, councilmembers, city manager star, city staff. It's my pleasure that at Montclair PD, we're aggressively hiring candidates for the position of police officer. And it's my pleasure to introduce our three newest police officers, who I'll introduce one at a time. The first officer that I would like to call forward is Officer Steven Silos. A little bit about Officer Silos. He was born and raised in the city of Monobello, California, graduated from Monobello High School in 2006. While in high school, he played four years of baseball and was voted MVP his senior year. A few years after high school, in 2010, Officer Silos enlisted in the United States Army stationed at Fort Bragg, North Carolina, and deployed to Kandahar, Afghanistan. Once he returned, he re-enlisted and was stationed at Fort Carson, Colorado, where he deployed for a second time to Kandahar, Afghanistan. While in the Army, Officer Silos married his wife Serena. After six years in the service, he was honorably discharged from the United States Army as a sergeant. That length of service was not enough for Officer Silos, as he then enlisted in the California National Guard, serving honorably for six additional years. In 2016, Officer Silos attended the Los Angeles Police Academy, where he became a police officer for LAPD. After graduation and probation, he patrolled out of Newton Division in the south-central area of Los Angeles. He was an officer with LAPD for approximately six years. And then he later transferred to the Buena Park Police Department, where he served one year with them. In his free time, Officer Silos likes to barbecue, cook, and spend time with his family in his spare time, of course. And he is a Los Angeles Chargers and a Dodgers fan. I hope that's okay with everybody in here. Maybe not. We are happy to have Officer Silos aboard as a lateral to our agency, and we give you Officer Silos. The next officer I'd like to call up to the front is Officer Rick Dominguez. Born and raised in Los Angeles County, he brings to Montclair PD over 16 years of service with, as prior agency, the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Throughout his career at Riverside Sheriff, he undertook a myriad of roles showcasing his versatility and expertise, from serving with their department as an FTO, which is a field training officer, to engaging in recruitment efforts for his previous department. Rick's dedication extends to specialized units, including the Coachella Valley Narcotics Task Force and the Riverside Auto Theft Interdiction Detail, where his skills were instrumental in combating crime. His commitment to the community extended beyond the badge as an explorer advisor with the Riverside Sheriff. Rick mentored and guided the next wave of aspiring law enforcement officers. His involvement in the special enforcement team underscored his proactive approach in ensuring public safety. Rick's career has taken him across various stations, from the city of Riverside to the remote expanses stretching from Blythe to the Imperial County border. His service did not stop there. He also earned a life-saving award for rescuing a female victim from a potential homicide and assault while he was with Riverside. So let's give him a round of applause just for that. Officer Dominguez brings a lot of experience to Montclair PD, and we are happy to have him aboard as one of our newest officers. And finally, I will call Officer George Maronis up to the front, please. Officer Maronis is another experienced officer, and he brings three years of experience with his prior agency, the Brawley, the City of Brawley Police Department in California, and he brings that to Montclair PD. George has a passion for traffic safety and has taken courses to become a certified drug recognition expert. George uses his training to proactively detect and intervene with the actions of impaired drivers. He's expressed his success has been attributed by his family support system, which is very important, if not the most important, consisting of his wife, Nettie, and his parents, Jorge Loreen and his canine companion at home, Argos. George grew up in San Bernardino County and has developed a pride to call this community his home. He is a team player, is competitive in nature naturally, has been drawn to loving football. George has volunteered his time when he's off duty to the National Public Safety Football League, which is a nonprofit public safety football team that raises funds for various charities to benefit the local community. George looks forward to building camaraderies with our department now and developing lasting friendships and memories. And we again welcome experienced Officer George Maronis to Montclair PD. And that concludes my presentation for new officers. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. And again, I want to say thank you for you three. I think the significance tonight is that we have three officers who are latter who came from other agencies to the city of Montclair. Bring that experience to our city, which I know we very much appreciate that. So thank you, Chief. And we'll move on to the next amount on the agenda. And tonight, we're doing the presentation for the Holiday Home Decoration Awards. And if PD needs to leave, I understand that. And I want to ask that, at this time, I'd like to introduce Diane Wells, who's the chairperson of the Community Activities Commission, who will be telling stories about the winners. Diane, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. As a chairperson on Montclair Community Activities Commission, it gives me a great pleasure to announce the winners of the city of Montclair's 25th Annual Holiday Home Decoration Contest. There are always many outstanding nominations, and again, this year was no exception. As always, the judging was very difficult. A total of 20 nominations were received this year. The commission tries to give everyone an opportunity to be selected. Therefore, past winners are ineligible for three years. On December 6th, the CAC drove throughout Montclair and judged every entry. We applaud everyone for doing an excellent job of enhancing our neighborhoods during the holiday season. After I read a brief description of each home and show a PowerPoint presentation, I will ask the winners to come forward to be presented with a framed award certificate and a gift card they chose to a store or restaurant in Montclair. Let's begin. The home of the Bryant family, located at 9743 Lehigh Avenue, sings the joyful tunes of the season and shines bright with decorations for visitors of all ages. Lights cover the entire home and all plants in the yard. The giant light pole in front of the house is even decked out with lights, greeting all in the area. Various magical wooden decorations line the sidewalk in front of the home, along with a "Ho, ho, ho" message from Santa when entering the driveway. The driveway is lined with large strings of rainbow candy-shaped lights, as well as welcoming snowmen and the brightest of snowflakes. The charming yard is attended by a Christmas kitten and penguin, ready for the holiday, as well as Yoda watching over and R2-D2 driving an X-wing ship. The entire home is lined with cheerful illuminations. The roof is completely engulfed in striking lights, which must have helped Santa find the home as he is already sitting on the roof awaiting Christmas Eve. I'd like the Bryant family to please come forward to accept the Sounds and Sights of Christmas Award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
A house that truly stands out is the Ferreira Family Home, located at 10158 Tudor Avenue. When driving down the street, you are greeted with bright red and white candy canes that light up the entire corner that are oh-so-inviting. Colorful lights like gumdrops accompany the candy canes and light up the entire fence. Joyful Disney characters such as Lightning McQueen, Tigger, and the monsters from Monster Inc., as well as some friendly snowmen fill the yard, wishing you the happiest of holidays. Bright bulbs and presents are projected on the back fence, creating movement and magic in the yard. And the eaves of the home, along with the bushes, are covered with colorful lights, and the roof is lined with icicles from a cold winter's night. A lighted wreath is meticulously placed on the highest peak of the eve, and the front door is dressed with its own holiday wreath. Santa awaits eagerly to drop off presents on the roof and is accompanied by a large Merry Christmas inflatable to wish the season's greetings to all who pass by. Would the Ferreira family please come forward to accept the Candy Cane Corner Award? Come on. Oh, you're welcome. Come on.
Congratulations. All right. Good work. Who did all the work? Hey, you did all the work. All right. What did your mom want? Whatever she wants to do. All right.
Yeah, you should be part two.
That mom did all the work.
She lost me around.
Yeah, that's what I meant. All right.
You're welcome. Finally, visitors are greeted with bright lights and friendly faces at the Rodriguez Family Home at 4570 Marino Street. Bright white lights cascading from the eaves of the home are completed with Star of Bethlehem at the peak of the roof and two heralding angels, which help illuminate the entire home. The bushes, large and small, are enchanted with lights as well. And a large Christmas tree made of lights stands tall in the center of the yard. Santa and his closest furry and chilly friends meet you at the sidewalk, surrounded by lights that outline the yard perfectly. Heralding angels stand perched above the tallest bushes and watch over this gorgeous display of lights. Once headed toward the doorway, you will meet some familiar faces from Sesame Street, along with the Grinch who greets you near the front door, which is completed with a wreath. The Rodriguez family were a previous Holiday Home Decoration Contest winner in 2019. Would the Rodriguez family please come forward to accept the Merry and Bright Award?
You guys enjoy that. Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work. Stay very beautiful. Well, congratulations to all the three families for making our city look even more beautiful during these holiday seasons. I appreciate, on behalf of the City Council, for doing this. And I also want to recognize the members of the Community Activities Commission as well. Thank you for your hard work. Diane, did I, you have a concluding remarks? I suspect I interrupted you, but go ahead.
I do, just a few. Congratulations to all our winners. Members of the community are encouraged to view all of these homes. A list of all the winners is available this evening and will be available this week at City Hall and on the city's website and Facebook page. Please drive and view these beautiful decorations and holiday spirit exhibited by the residents of Montclair. Thank you. And this concludes our presentation.
Thank you again, and thank you for everyone making this possible. And if you wish to stay of the meeting, you can stay if you like, or if you wish to leave, this is a great time to leave.
Thank you.
All right. What's that? Yeah. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is public communication or public comment. Members of the audience have an opportunity to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda or any of the consent calendar items. You have five minutes to address the city council. If you're in the audience, you'll fill out your speaker's request card. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand to request to speak. And if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine. So I'm gonna ask the city clerk if she has any speakers this evening.
Yes. For our first speaker, we have Herman Jansen. Hope I said that right.
Mayor, City Council, here on behalf of Bill Kaufman tonight, who is in the hospital currently on a brief stint, hopefully, has a little sepsis in his index finger. And so he had to go back and get that taken care of. But he asked me to come by and update you real quick. We still have the flagship, potential flagship location on Central. And so we're looking forward potentially to open that sometime next year. And we are developing a website currently. We hired a web designer, introductory website, to disseminate information to city council and potential property owners and that sort of thing. We're also developing the wellness aspect of our enterprise. It's not gonna be just a medical dispensary. We are gonna be having herbalists, licensed herbalists on site. And also, we are developing a community engagement aspect of it, like blood donation, blood drives, and perhaps trash collection and that sort of thing. I myself have been volunteering for Mules and Wheels for a long time. So I would like to get back into that, too. I don't know if the city of Montclair has that, actually. So I've been, I know how to peel carrots and that sort of thing. And so we would look forward to working with the city on these ideas potentially next year. And so, and again, he's sending me here tonight to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and Productive New Year. Hopefully, we can put something together next year.
Right. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And if you wish to join, if you want to be a volunteer for Mules and Wheels, Marshall will overtalk to you.
Next is Xavier Mendez.
Well, Merry Christmas, Xavier.
Oh, Merry Christmas to all of you. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager Star, and the community, and all the city staff. My name is Xavier Mendez, and I reside at 4588 Benito Street here in Montclair, California. I am here today to talk about a Montclair icon in remembrance of Richard Salazar. Richard Salazar was born on February 25th, 1944, and grew up in Montclair along with his five siblings. In fact, two of them still live on Huntington Drive. Richard graduated from Montclair High School in 1962. They grew up in the 5,000 block of Canoga Street, where he lived, until he married his wife Cecilia in 1964. Richard passed away on December 5th, 2023. He was 79 years old. Richard came to work for the city of Montclair around 1969, 1970. Richard left the city and went to Monovista Water District for a two-year stint in '79, but came back to the city of Montclair in '81. He then retired after 33 years with the city of Montclair in November of 2004. Richard started as a maintenance worker, was later a lead worker, then became the motor sweeper operator, where he loved his job and took pride in his work, and most importantly, keeping his sweeper clean and properly maintained. At the end of every day, you could find Richard doing preventative maintenance, like greasing all the fittings, changing out sweeper brooms and curtains, always keeping that thing clean. It was like it was his own. Hated somebody else driving it. Mario Orioli was the superintendent for most of his career with the city. And he got to see him retire in 2004. And I remember Richard handing him his keys to the sweeper back to Mario, and kind of emotional time at that moment. Jim Latman, who was the assistant superintendent, and was actually his next-door neighbor on Canoga for many years, grew up with their family. He was their neighbor from 1962 to 1974. So it's a tight-knit family here in Montclair. But both Mario and Jim share my opinion of Richard as one of the best motor sweeper operators we've ever had. The reason I decided to share this man's life with you and the community is because I feel, as time goes by, we tend to forget how we got here. The institutional knowledge and pride of ownership is slowly changing hands to the next generations. And I just want to see the legacies live on and tell their stories to help the next group of city employees understand the city, to never forget the path that was made for them. As most of you know, I also worked for the city of Montclair for almost 29 years and retired as the Public Works Superintendent in 2021. At the city yard, we have a wall dedicated to past Public Works employees who worked for the city of Montclair and made a career of doing it. This is a partial list of some of the names that are on that wall in the courtyard of the Public Works Department that deserve this mention. Carl Sawtell, Frank Burrell, Joe Compos, Davy Crockett, Harold Mahoney, Virginia Clueus, Brian Wren, Bob Raider, and Rudy Gomez, who was Richard Salazar's first cousin. These are some of the names of others that are still living, but also made an impact to the city while working here for many years. Jeff Flanders, who still likes to work here at the city for a few hours every month. Dennis Defoea, he was our sign guy. Paul Malacara, he was our sweeper operator and sewer guy. Greg Guevara, he was our equipment supervisor. Harry Gust, a mechanic. Lou Rickert, another sweeper operator. Albert Aguirre, another sweeper. Hank Miranda, graffiti abatement. Jeff Steimetz, jack-of-all-trades. Joe Rosales, our stormwater guy. Marilyn Stats, our director. Mike Hudson, also director and engineer, and Steve Stanton, who recently retired. Sorry if I forgot anyone. Thank you for your time. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas to all.
Well, thank you, Xavier, for bringing up Richard Salazar. Yeah, let's give Richard a clap of hands, Richard, for a longtime employee and a longtime resident of the city of Montclair. And I just want to announce that Richard's funeral will be on December 21st. Visitation will be at Todd's Mortuary in Pomona from 8:30 to 10:30. And his mass will be at 11:30 a.m. at Our Lady of Assumption in Claremont. And his burial will be 1:00 p.m. at Oak Park Cemetery in Claremont. And I guess Richard was a big fan of the angels, so if you plan to attend, they ask you if you can wear any angel gear. You cannot wear only autani gear, so that's out now. But I just want to recognize Richard, and I appreciate Xavier for talking about his remembrance, his time here in the city of Montclair Public Works Department, very dedicated employee, and that's something that we greatly appreciate and like we'll love to see more of with our next generation of. But also, a longtime Montclair resident that has much history in the city. So thank you for that, and we'll be adjourned to meeting in memory of Richard Salazar. Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Ben.
I was actually gonna bring that up during my comments, but thank you for acknowledging that we would be adjourned to tonight's meeting. If we could get that certificate from the city to them, perhaps to give to the family at the service, it'd be appreciated.
We'll try our best. We'll try our best, but doesn't mean it's gonna happen. But if we have to, we'll melt to the family as well. So, next speaker, please.
Veronica Milliman.
Okay, Veronica, how you doing?
Just fine. Good evening, Mayor Dutre, council members and staff. My name is Veronica Milliman, and I'm an ambassador now for the Montclair Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, very good.
Yeah. The chamber has several exciting events scheduled in January, and I would just like to share them with you. On January 11th, Montclair Firefighter Recognition Luncheon at Noon. The event will be held at Chino Basin Water Conservation District at 4594 San Bernardino Street in Montclair. Tickets are $40 for chamber members and $45 for non-members. We hope you will enjoy, we hope you would join us as we celebrate Montclair firefighters. On January 18th, Al Pastor Taqueria Ribbon Cutting at 9453 Central Avenue, Montclair. The event will be at noon. You will have the opportunity to sample some delicious food from Al Pastor Taqueria. On January 24th, She Math Educational Foundation Ribbon Cutting at 5472 Marino Street, Montclair. The event will begin at noon. Come and see unique ways of learning for students in Montclair. January 25th, Hawkeye Workforce at 3130 Inland Empire Boulevard, Suite A in Ontario. The event is at noon, and Hawkeye Workforce creates job opportunities for the youth. So we hope to see you at these events.
Well, thank you, Veronica. And obviously, you were a member of the Montclair Football Boosters Club, very actively involved.
Yes.
Her son just graduated, will be graduating this year as a senior. He was a wide receiver for this last varsity of Montclair football, welcomed aboard as a member now of the Chamber of Commerce. Great.
Thank you. Yeah, keeping me busy. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We appreciate you, too, everything you guys have done and shown support for our team. They deserved it, and you guys were right there.
Well, they had a great year.
Yeah.
They almost won that game against... They almost won that game against...
I tell them they did. I just, I tell them they did. That was...
Yeah, they played a great game against Santa Monica Prep. I was a little worried about that game when I saw the big guys on Santa Monica Prep, but they almost beat them.
Yeah, they scared them. Thank you.
Okay.
Our last card is for Matthew Wheaton.
Welcome aboard, Matt. Do you want me to call him Matt or Matthew?
Matt's fine.
Matt's fine. You want to make sure? Some people have this thing about their names.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start off by saying Merry Christmas to everybody. I just had a couple of just comments, questions that I wanted to put out there about one of the topics tonight, which would be Schedule C number three. It has to do with the cameras that are going to be installed for the police department, I believe. I was just kind of curious as to what capacity these cameras are going to be used for. Is it going to be just for things like Amber Alerts? Is it going to be looking for stolen cars? And then I was curious as to, I saw that it's going to be for a five-year contract, and I was just wondering at what type of criteria is going to be there to know if this program is successful or not.
Perfect. We'll have the chief at that time talk about it. I was going to ask, bring it up, but yeah.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Nothing else? That's it? Thank you. Okay, any speakers? Ben, did you have someone to say, Ben?
No.
Okay.
No.
Any, any other speakers on Zoom?
That doesn't look like anyone...
Somebody else calling in?
...raising their hand.
All right. Okay, we're done with public comments. And we'll now head out towards Consent Calendar. And I'll throw my left.
Just wanted to make a quick comment about B10.
Okay, you have something on E10? Okay. You said E10?
B, like boy.
Oh, B10. All right, B10. Before we get to others, I know on item C6 Diane, that's being polled. So C6 will come off the calendar.
Just to continue it to the next meeting.
That'll be continued to the next meeting, so we'll take C6 out. And, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull B like boy nine, C like Charles two, and C like Charles four.
C4, okay. All right. How about my right? Anybody want to pull anything off the right?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number C3, simply because it was talked about tonight, and we'll give the chief a chance to address that.
All right, C3, okay. Anybody else?
Well, it looks like the whole calendar is going to be pulled. I'm going to refrain from items B11 and 12 that I was going to pull. I'll deal with that in a meeting that I'm requesting with the Finance Director and the City Manager. So I would like to pull Charlie, C Charlie 1.
C1?
Mr. Mayor, C2 is already polled, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then C5 and 7, for purposes of a comment on 7.
C5 and C7. Now, you guys do know you can contact the City Manager before the meetings and ask questions and all that good stuff, which I did this morning about an item on agenda, which you guys are pulling off anyways with some questions on. So just in the future, let everybody know, you can contact the City Manager, you can email him, call him, Dave, you know, the Monday morning, and ask questions. Kind of makes the process go by a little faster. But nevertheless, we'll get going on this, and we'll start with item, I guess the first item is item B9? Is this B9?
Yes, sir.
All right, go for it.
I have a question about the, well, the issue about the spike strips makes perfect sense. I totally 100% agree with that. But I have a question about the kind of rams that are used to enter buildings. So the reason why I have that issue is because at some point, I lived in a city where the police department often used battering rams that were larger than the door. So they would drive the ram up to the door and blast through, but then the house is uninhabitable. And as we're talking about those kind of tools here in the City of Montclair, I wanted to clarify that that's not what we're doing, and understand what kind of entry tools are available.
Thanks for the question. The entry tools that we are seeking to purchase here are not a battering ram that's attached to any type of vehicle. These are devices that were already utilized to gain entry to houses for several reasons, whether it be a tactical search warrant, a medical assist, or a barricaded subject, or with a search warrant which validates its use. It's not just a use to go rip a door off a house. They are carried, they are small handheld items, and they're used in conjunction with a pick for the door, which alleviates some of the pressure from the latch. And then rather than an officer having to use his or her foot, they can use this device, which is held, small enough to fit in a backpack. It's held by their hands, and it's used to breach the door to gain entry. With some damage, but more minimal damage, and it also alleviates any type of injury that can occur for ankle injury or foot injury for making that door. And it's not attached to a vehicle. These items are, also, these items are, you know, at the request of Montclair High School, they've made a container for us at the high school where our school resource officer would be to have these tools on hand all the time on their campus. In the event there's an active shooter or some type of active event, any officer or staff responding immediately doesn't have to wait for equipment. They can make entry into the school, obtain this equipment, and utilize it to breach doors if they need to in classrooms, which we know sometimes are locked, they could, you know, to assist with evacuation and things like that. So there's, one of the items is a bag that some of these items are carried with, and they are literally almost a backpack that you can put on and place the items in.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, so next time is B10. Anybody else have a question on B9? No? B10. So who's B10?
Thank you, that was me. That was me. I just wanted to spotlight this item for our residents, because I thought it was just such an impressive show of our city's ingenuity. Instead of trashing Public Works vehicles that no longer meet California's emission standards, we're donating the vehicles to a city in Mexico that can use them still. I think that's a fantastic partnership arrangement that we have with a city that could use the equipment. And I'd love to see that. And I know it's not just vehicles. I know, you know, we've done that in the past and plan to continue doing so, and I hope we do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Item C1, which I believe is also a previous closed session personnel item. Go ahead.
That actually was my question. I don't know if the City Manager or City Attorney can provide this date. When were these items' agendas last in closed session?
Well, these would have been, I can't give you the date specifically, but any time there is a request to meet and confer on the part of bargaining groups, the City Council goes, the city staff goes to City Council in closed session to secure direction. In this particular case, these issues would have been brought before the City Council in the earlier part of this year, as we prepared for meeting and conferring after we had received requests from the various bargaining groups. In the case of the executive management and management group, however, the City Manager represents those groups, and so I would have met separately with the City Council, in this case probably in May, early June of this year, to get your direction in relation to meeting and conferring with the management and executive management groups as to what the City Council would be willing to implement. And based on the direction from the City Council, those approved requests were implemented, and the contracts before you this evening would be memorializing the language of those benefits that were improved, although the benefits were improved at the time that the City Council authorized them, and the actions were taken to the Personnel Committee for implementation.
Well, thank you for the explanation. I was trying to recall the last time these discussions were brought to us, and I had thought we had all bargaining units completed. And that's, it just caught me off guard. But that said, both contracts are receiving a 4% increase, is that what I read correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And the effective date of this contract is to be July 1 of '23 through the end of the fiscal year in '24.
Correct.
Will their pay be retroactive to July 1, or will their pay only take effect after tonight's vote?
So the pay has already been implemented. It was implemented in July after the city staff received direction from the City Council, and action items were taken to the Personnel Committee for implementation. So there is no retroactivity at this point, as the pay increases have already been implemented.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, next item is C2. Anybody else have a question on C1, by the way? If not, C2.
That would, that would be me as well.
Go ahead, Ben.
I did.
Both of us did.
Mr. City Manager, I believe the ordinance in front of us was per my request for the draft ordinance regarding this issue, correct?
Okay, to be clear, this is not a draft ordinance. This is the ordinance that the City Council adopted in May of 2022.
Okay, all right. So the separate item, I don't recall receiving it. Anyhow, if I could get the draft ordinance that's mentioned on page 34 of the staff report concerning the draft ordinance for the city to become in compliance with SB 1383 and the organic waste components of the mandate, if you will. But I do have questions, though nonetheless.
Okay, if I can correct, the draft ordinance illusion that is made in the staff report refers to back when the City Council first considered this item. This was the draft ordinance that was presented to the City Council and BRTech. The City Council subsequently adopted and approved this ordinance, so draft is no longer an applicable word as it relates to the ordinance. The ordinance has been adopted by the council.
So it's just an error, then, in the staff report?
No, no, no. No, the staff report is only creating the framework of the timeline for implementation of this program. And it only refers to, at that particular timeline, it was presented to the City Council and BRTech as a draft ordinance. And both sides had made comments related to the design and the development of the ordinance, and it then subsequently came before the City Council for adoption. So it's no longer a draft. It is, in fact, codified since May of 2022.
Okay, I appreciate that. Now, you're asking council to engage into a contract with this entity, I'm trying to get the name, Abound Food Care. I want to know what entails the phrase "adopt an ordinance to inspect and enforce compliance." I'm bothered or concerned about the words "inspect" and "enforce compliance" with respect to the services that this entity will be providing.
So under state law, specifically the law that is referenced in here, SB 1323, I believe, we are obligated under state law to implement a program related to the recycling of food wastes. The contract before you in relation to an agreement with Abound Foods is that we will be then following the requirement under state law to implement an enforcement program. That enforcement program relates to making certain that primarily Tier 2 or commercial businesses like restaurants are following the requirements of the law. So for example, establishing programs that will provide for the recycling of food waste, not in the sense that it goes into landfills, but it will be provided to entities that redistribute that food waste to companies that will then make it available for underprivileged individuals who lack food security. So entering into this contract will allow the city to bring a consultant on board that will allow us to start developing the programs that we will follow in relation to the mandates that are being imposed on all cities throughout the state by SB 1383. So, under the law, effective January 1, 2024, we need to start implementing these components of that legislation. We will then use this consultant to devise the, to design the programs that we will use, implement software programs that will allow the city to do the tracking in relation to the enforcement protocols, work with the Tier 1 businesses in the city to make certain that they are complying with state law in relation to contributing their extra surplus food supplies to these entities that will then redistribute it to individuals who lack that food security, and making certain otherwise that the elements of SB 1830, 1383 are being implemented appropriately.
Okay, so is Tier 1 only...
Tier 2.
I thought you said Tier 1. So Tier 2 only applies to restaurants?
They are the primary component of Tier 2.
So the, this new program that's to be implemented concerning the inspection and enforcement of the new provisions, it will not apply yet to residential homes?
Well, residential homes are already required to place their solid, or their food wastes in a plastic bag, and then deposit that in their green waste containers. That has been the law since adoption of the city's ordinance in relation to the requirements under SB 1383. So beyond that, no, there won't be any direct inspection of the items that residents put in their food waste container. Obviously, when a container is picked up by a waste hauler and they observe some form of contamination, then there is the potential that the waste hauler will put a notice on the container advising the resident that they are in violation of the requirements under SB 1383. So for example, if a waste hauler picks up a black container, and the bulk of the waste material coming out of the black container is food waste, as opposed to solid waste, then that would be a violation of SB 1383, and the resident would be advised that they are in violation and that they need to comply.
And I understand that. I kind of wish the representatives from Abound Food Care were here, because I just want to know to what extent enforcement is going to be implemented concerning our restaurants within the city limits.
So Abound Food Care is not an enforcement entity. They are only a consultant to the city to help us design the programs related to enforcement of SB 1383. And then the city, along with BRTech, our contract solid waste hauler, will be responsible for enforcement.
I understand that, but nonetheless, their recommendations will carry weight. That's why we're paying them. I just am uneasy. And I know this is coming down from the state and yet another state mandate that they've shoved down every city's throat without any funding for the staffing and the manpower to implement the proposal that they forced on us. But that's an argument for a different day. I just, our restaurants are already strapped as it is, having rebounded from COVID and their inability to sell and have in-person dining for a few years. Many of them are still struggling. I just don't, I just don't like the fact that we're going to do this. Anyhow, I would just urge for caution. I would urge for some mercy with, when dealing with our restaurants, even residents if we have to. And I would like, want that conveyed to Abound Care, that I don't want this to turn into a strong-arm enforcement policy, whether we, whether we as a city police it, or we ask them to eventually later down the road or not. But nonetheless, the Enforcement Division, if you will, of this policy, I don't want it to be a strong-harmed attempt. It needs to be under some grace and consideration for the circumstances that residents are in and restaurants, because I don't want them fined simply because they inadvertently put food in the wrong bin, or they dispose of it when maybe they should have recycled it. At first, it sounded like this was going to give the scraps of food to then be recycled and be used to individuals that are homeless or food insecure, because those individuals deserve first crack at the food, not someone's scraps in seconds, if you will. But anyhow, I'm still uneasy about the item. But thank you for, thank you for the explanation.
Mr. City Manager's question, will this policy come back to the council for action?
Well, yes. Yes, we would certainly be bringing that back.
We will see what the recommendation is.
Yeah. I do want to point out, though, that from an economic perspective, food diversion is actually probably a cost savings for the businesses, because they are not putting the surplus food into containers and having to pay BRTech to pick it up. So effectively, by implementing a program where there is food diversion, they voluntarily provide the food to companies that will pick it up from them and then redistribute it. That's not a That's not a cost to the commercial enterprises that are participating in the program. It actually ends up saving them money because they're not paying BRTech to pick up the waste. It's being diverted through a company that will otherwise redistribute that food.
Right.
If that is the case, then we're basically having them donate day-old bread, if you will, to then be used at shelters or for families that need it. That's, that's fine. I'm fine with that. It's other aspects of it. But I appreciate that intent.
Mayor Protem Johns has been very patient. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the reason that I pulled this item is because of the part about food insecurity. And I just wanted to clarify, and Mr. City Star, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what the restaurants will need to do at the end of the day after they've cooked a bunch of food, instead of throwing it away, they give it to Abound Care who gives it to the people who need it instead of tossing it. That's the main focus, correct?
No, Abound Care is a consultant to the city. Abound Care is not the company that will be collecting the food that will go into the diversion program. Abound Care will work with the city to identify companies that do that. And then the city will enter into agreements to use those companies to collect the food that is to be entered into the diversion program. So once we engage with Abound Care and they put the program together for us, then the city will have the responsibility to enter into these various agreements with these vendors that will do that redistribution.
So, bottom line, the food's going to get to the people who need it.
That is exactly what this is about.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
So again, the policy itself will come back to the council for adoption at a future date. So let's go to item C3. And this is regarding the Flock system. Why don't you come up, chief?
Mr. Mayor, I pulled it because a resident did ask a question.
Any of the councillors have a question on item 2? No? Nobody else? If you can talk about, a little about item C3, and I, go ahead. You start off and I'll finish off with the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, item C3 is regarding the acquisition of some more Flock cameras, which are, which is the company name for ALPR, license plate reader cameras, which are already distributed, there are already 40 distributed in the city of Montclair at different locations. If I can answer the question from what I recall from the question, these are not surveillance cameras. They are not traffic enforcement cameras. They don't enforce any laws. They don't write any tickets or anything of that sort. They are license plate and image distribution cameras that are utilized in multiple investigations from, Grand Theft Auto is the main, the main way we'll capture a vehicle passing through that's been reported anywhere in the state. And it will alert dispatch that there's a stolen vehicle driving, a vehicle involved in a carjacking, missing persons vehicles as well. Any way that we enter the vehicle or law enforcement entity enters the vehicle, it will alert officers who are working at that place and time that that vehicle passed through a certain location. And sometimes it gives us a direction of travel of the vehicle as well. In the last, since December of 2021, these cameras have been instrumental in solving violent felonious crimes, recovering stolen vehicles, deadly assault with a deadly weapon suspect, eight robbery suspect, one rape suspect. And in 2023, they assisted MPD in the recovering of 57 stolen vehicles. They've been utilized in multiple homicide investigations. So I hope I'm answering the question that they are not enforcement cameras. They are utilized by our staff as a real-time enforcing tool and also a investigation tool for officers or detectives. If a suspect vehicle was seen leaving the area, sometimes if the plate is readable, it'll pick up at least the description of the car or the plate, and we'll be able to conduct some investigation from that point.
I just want to comment that I'm happy that we're adding 20 more cameras. This is a very powerful law enforcement technology. One homicide that was talked about is there at Kingsley in Mills. There was two young men, there were two young men that died as a result of that, at the market.
Multiple suspects as well.
There were multiple suspects. And because of the Flock cameras, the Flock cameras picked up the vehicles as they left the scene of the crime. And so Police Department were able to identify the license plate numbers. And then, of course, they had an idea what the vehicles looked like and were able to apprehend those suspects. I did, my last ride-along, actually, I did. I remember the Flock cameras went off about a stolen vehicle on the street. Cameras were able to pick up the vehicle as it traveled through. Unfortunately, by the time we got to, the vehicle went on the freeway. But the officer I was with indicated that this technology is very powerful. It makes our job a lot easier. So if a crime takes place and we kind of have an idea of what the vehicle looks like, we don't need a license plate number, just going to add what the vehicle looks like and maybe getting a description exactly where it is. We can go on our cameras and try to pick it up. Well, the cameras will actually identify that. If they know what the vehicle was, let's say it's a Ford, if I'm saying correctly, chief, if it's a red Ford pickup, I believe the cameras can start looking for a red Ford pickup. And if it finds it, then the officer will be notified. Or he can go actually on the, on a live camera from his vehicle and see the actual suspect's vehicle going through the town and try to apprehend that vehicle. That's how powerful this vehicle is. And I know that we're looking at $150,000 each year in the lease, about, it's about $150,000. That's probably almost equivalent to one police, put in one police office, start on the street for a year. So I think that's a tremendous, great investment for our city. Again, it makes it easier for our police officers to find these suspects. And obviously, at the same time, it makes it safer for our residents than now knowing that we have more eyes in the city of Montclair and we're about to add 20 more eyes in the city of Montclair to make sure that we have a safe community.
And thank you. And if I may add, just because a plate takes a hit on the, or makes a hit on one of these cameras, dispatch goes through multiple vetting processes before they put that information out to ensure that this, that is the correct vehicle. If it makes sure it's not an out-of-state plate that's reading a California plate. And so we have multiple processes in place, which is part of our policy manual and our operating procedures, which ensure that the wrong person or the wrong car isn't pulled over and that we do do further investigation to ensure that that car, just because a car is involved doesn't mean the registered owner was driving sometimes.
And if I'm correct, Flock is also, the city of Ontario has Flock, Pomona?
Multiple, it's a common technology in the private sector. Private sector as well, and multiple agencies up and down the state of California, if not nationwide, utilize a Flock or a similar style camera. And the information is only maintained for a short period of time. I believe it's two months, two months. And once then the information falls out of the system, it's not something we look at every day, but it does, it does identify some vehicles.
But if they go to, crimes committed in Montclair, but they go into Ontario, we're still be able to pick them up with Ontario's Flock system?
Yes, Ontario does have a similar system. It's not the same system.
Great, thank you.
But I hope that answers the questions that were presented.
Questions? No? Thank you, sir. All right, item C4. Who's got item C4?
Did? Yes, I did. So I just wanted to make a quick comment about this item. Having spent some, a few years with the Chamber of Commerce, what I've learned is that many of our small businesses, the ones that are sole proprietors, they understand very well how to operate their business, but they don't understand how to make it grow. They don't know what tools are available to them, when you talk to them. When we would talk to businesses about obtaining grants, they have no idea how to go online and do that. And so to have the SBDC partner with the Chamber is going to be what a fantastic asset to our business community, to help our business community grow. So I just wanted to say, I'm really happy to see this on the agenda. And I hope that it passes because it will be a great benefit for our local business community. That concludes my comments. And then the next item is, I believe, Councilmember Lopez, you pulled C5?
I did, Madam, Mayor Protem. Question to the City Manager or the City Clerk. I did read the item. And I appreciated the explanation of the process that is currently in place when an individual or entity or whoever the asking party might be making a public records request, the process by which staff and the office goes through. I understand that we're being asked to enter into a one-year agreement with a company to assist with the caseload, if you will, for public record requests. Let's see here. I, I'd like to ask, what is the reason for us to enter into an agreement with this provider? Is it lack of staff in the department? Or what's, what's the impetus for it?
Well, the process of responding to records requests, it requires coordination between several staff members and departments. And a lot of times, you know, it's kind of difficult to determine where someone is in the process. This system would help with kind of compiling all of the communication and work on a request into one place where everyone can see where that request is in the process, who has it, who's looking for records, you know, there can be comments shared. It's not something where you have to search your email to find out, okay, well, who was the last person who said something about this request? Kind of this, this just makes the process more organized. And I think just looking at the demos that we looked at and other cities' comments, it really just improves and streamlines the whole process and just makes everything faster. And not only that, but this system can help to redirect people's requests if the documents already exist on our website. As soon as they start typing in an item, it would just pop up with a link showing them where they can download that record. So it would also reduce the amount of requests that we get in the first place in that way.
So it's then a?
Diversion.
A portal, if you will, that all staff that are impacted can access?
Yes, it would. We would set up all of this, you know, certain staff in each department that manage their records would be contacts. I would like at least two staff members in each department so that there is some, if someone's out, someone else can take over.
And then I read some of the contract itself. And I was just curious with the information of the requesting party. I believe it was under the usage data and its definition of usage data and its storing of information. Is there guarantees that the asking party's information, is this company going to be able to store and keep that information? Or will it be terminated after a certain point?
No, the information is, belongs to the city. But what this does do is it creates a profile of documents that are stored on the city's computer system. And if it makes an identification of those documents in relation to the request, then it can simply link the requesting party to that particular document, which then alleviates the city of the responsibility of finding that document and meeting the timeline in which the city is obligated to comply with a Public Records Act request. So it actually streamlines the process and adds the city's computer system as an alternative source that automatically will generate the documents necessary for the person who's making the request.
Do you know how many public entities, government entities, they currently have under their clientele list?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but they have, are constantly adding, I think probably at least 50 cities in California, but they operate nationwide.
And their customer service component of the contract, how are they? Because I noticed they're based in, I think it's Delaware or somewhere back east.
I'm not sure exactly if that impacts it because their customer service, they have, you know, people working remotely in customer service. So they have people who are kind of on our same timeline.
I was just concerned about if you needed them or department head needed them in an emergency situation. How quickly are they going to be responsive to us?
I heard great things about their customer service, and that was one of the things that I was mainly looking at.
Okay, all right. I appreciate both of you guys answering my questions. Thank you.
Okay, that was just C5. C6 is being pulled, and C7.
C6, me as well. Okay, are both items being pulled?
Only C6 is being pulled.
Being continued to the next meeting.
Being continued to the next meeting.
Okay.
To a uncertain date. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. C7.
Real quickly, I did have a, what, 15-minute, 20-minute conversation with the City Manager on the phone regarding this item. For the public's benefit, the, this item would continue the contract for the consulting firm that is dealing with the, I suppose, renovation or rehabilitation or the destruction and rebuilding of the Central Avenue Bridge between Holt and Mission, or State Street, rather, right around that timeframe. There were certain components that I didn't fully understand, funding mechanisms, as well as items that were already expended. The City Manager did explain that to me. I was honest with him. I'm still a little bit foggy on some of the missing money to complete the project. However, I am comfortable proceeding, just my personal opinion. I hope that we do get the balance of the funding for this 30-plus million dollar project. I know we have some 15 million secured, 17 million not secured, that we're hoping to get perhaps in the next six months, a decision on a grant. But thank you for your time, Mr. City Manager, earlier today. And I'll be voting for the item, but I hope that in the first quarter or the first half of next year, the item's brought back before us with the resolution on the continuance of the funding. And I appreciate staff for bringing it forward. Did I say everything correctly yet?
Yeah.
Perfectly.
And just a clarification, I know I'm there with Monica in my email, but the way I understand is we need 31, 32 million. And we've, so far, we have 14 million in grants secured.
Well, we received 15 million, but we've spent some of that money on the process going forward. So we need 17 million.
31 million. 31 million includes design, environmental. So we're about 17 million. We get the 17 million dollar grant, and then the city obligation is about 12%, 13% is what we have to put into it, about 1.5% is what the city's put into it? No, not 1.5. 11, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a local match to both of those grants. So the city would be, would need to come up with about 3.5 to 5 million dollars.
3.5 to 5 million dollars is what we can come up with.
To replace and widen the bridge.
Yeah, got it.
That's even if we get the 17 million dollar grant?
Well, that depends on the grant. So this particular grant is the MPDG grant, which is the, what do they call it? The multimodal project discretionary grant. Failing that, then the RACE grant is another grant we're looking at. And as I indicated earlier, that in our conversation, that's a potential 25 million dollar grant. We only need 17 million in that particular case. But in my understanding, is that grant requires a 5% local match. So 17%, then 5% of that 17%, which would be a much smaller amount of money.
Nonetheless, we would still be required to find that funding stream.
It always depends on the requirements in relation to the grant, yes. But typically, typically, there is a local match, but sometimes there's not.
And for the public's benefit, I know that this was advertised on social media. We had a, I believe, somewhat of a ribbon-cutting type thing or some type of, maybe it was just a public information forum down there to discuss the progress made. But the reason why this is moving so slowly is because, again, my opinion only, the added costs with respect to environmental impact reports, the delays with respect to those reports, and cost-benefit analysis being placed upon us. I think we had, well, we did expend over 8,000 at the request of the State Historic Preservation Officer for us to do a study and report on the Union Pacific Railroad issue. We were asked to spend 27,000 on, which is legitimate for us to try to apply for additional grant funding, but nonetheless, it cost 27,000. And all these environmental impact reports from Caltrans amounted to so far 12,000. So it's expenses out of our control, so it slows us down. But I would like to see that bridge widened and completed. I know there were some earthquake issues with respect to the structure that need to be addressed. And I think we better act sooner than later. But I know that many times it's out of our hands and out of our control. But nonetheless, it's being addressed.
Being addressed, yes. Of course, we're spending more money on the environmental fee than they spent on the SoFi Stadium since environmental is exempt there, so.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that bridge is approaching 60 years old. It was, I believe, 67. And not a lot has been done to that. So this is something, no matter what obstacles we may face with it, we're going to have to do because we don't need problems there.
Any reason why SAB, SBCTA is not involved in this project?
Well, it is a Nexus project, and it would warrant SBCTA's involvement, but they are not a major- but they are not a major participant in this project. It is primarily a city-related project because we sought the funding for it, and SBCTA was working with the city in relation to the Montavista Avenue grade separation. And they did not want to fund multiple grade separations in Montclair. This would be the third grade separation. And so it was really up to the city of Montclair to pursue this one. I also want to be fair in stating that while, yes, there are all of these engineering-related studies that have to be related to construction of the bridge. There were two issues that really were the primary factor in causing a lot of delay in relation to moving forward on this project. And one was the Union Pacific Railroad. There was an issue about the span across the railroad tracks. The city had preferred a multi-span project that would provide greater support to the bridge. Union Pacific Railroad was opposed to that, and they wanted only a two-span, a two-column support span. And so we had to work on the engineering related to that particular issue. And the other issue is Caltrans, which is the major contributor of funding related to the project at this point in time. Caltrans had originally identified the project as a bridge replacement project. And after having made the declaration that the bridge needed to be replaced, Caltrans made the determination that the bridge somehow remedied itself and only needed to be rehabilitated. So that's been a long-going issue between the city and Caltrans as to whether or not the bridge should be rehabilitated or replaced. We believe it should be replaced, and we continue to make that argument with Caltrans. And unless and until Caltrans makes a judgment related to rehabilitation or replacement, that will continue to be a, a delayed component of this project that we still need to get resolved.
Right. Okay, so can I get a motion for the consent calendar with exception of item C six?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the consent calendar as presented and discussed this evening, accepting item number C six.
Okay, sir, a second on my left.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mayor Proton Johnson. And we'll vote on this electronically. And it's adopted 5-0. Next is communications, and we'll go down to the city attorney.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items on the agenda as indicated. One, both to meet in closed session, the first one regarding pending litigation, Rivera versus Montclair, and the second one in regard to real property negotiations. So other than those two items, I would just like to wish everyone a happy holiday and New Year. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. City manager?
No items.
Thank you. I just want to announce that our January 2nd meeting will be canceled if there's no objections by the city council. So ordered. I'd like to adjourn the meeting with a number of folks. Again, we'll begin with retired city employee in the Pub Works Department, longtime Montclair resident, Richard Salazar, which we spoke earlier. I'd also like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Dr. Anita K. Kausk, if I'm saying it correctly. And she was a medical clinic volunteer, and I believe...
Kalusik.
Kalusik. And she was with Western University, Medical University. And she was a volunteer here, here in the city of Montclair. Also want to adjourn the memory of a good friend of all of ours, Chino Councilmember Glenn Duncan. We serve in the city council for Chino Hills, for Chino City, of Chino for many years. Also like to adjourn the memory of retired Ontario Monmouth School Deputy Superintendent, also a former Ontario Monmouth School member, Ontario City Councilmember, excuse me, Patrick John King, or Pat King, as everybody know. And finally, I'd like to adjourn the memory, and the reason why the flag is at half-staff, is our former Supreme Court Justice Sandra Day O'Connor. Obviously, we all know she made history as the first woman on the, on the Supreme Court. So again, we would adjourn the memory of those folks. I want to recognize staff. You know, I was out of the country for two weeks, and there were a couple of significant events that took place. Holly Jolly event here at the city of Montclair. The Christmas tree, by the way, looks beautiful. And I know the pictures I saw that the staff did a great job in putting this event together. And I understand it was the largest attendance, Marcia, largest attendance. And then, go ahead. Want to say something about it?
No, it was, it was large. I don't know that it was the absolute largest, but it was, there was a large turnout.
There was a lot of people there, but also I understand we had more events going on for the public. And then the, what do you call it, around the city, dashing through Montclair. It was an eight-hour event, probably the longest one. Am I correct? Am I correct, chief? You guys survived it? Eight hours. And I, part of the reason why it's eight hours is because there was a decision made, and there were some folks that Matt probably knows on Montclair connects, hey, how come South Montclair doesn't get dashing through Montclair? So it went to South Montclair and extended the event, but that's great. You know what? Frankly, cities have parades, a lot of cities have parades for Christmas. Pomona, Ontario, for example. Upland's another one. And we have something different. Should have a parade. We have a parade, but we come to your house in the parade, which makes it, makes it, I think, even more special. So I just want to recognize again, staff for putting that together, the hard work, the Saturdays, the eight hours, everything else. Without staff, those events do not take place. I do want to say this, as you know, the I-10 Express Lane Project is an ongoing headache for a lot, especially for commuters. There is an issue right now where some construction that was done on the medium specially does not meet Caltrans standards, I was told. So that's going to be torn out and redone. And so obviously, that delays things. And I was told because of that, and because of the urgency of trying to get the express lanes going, you probably won't have Montavista interchange complete until the summer, meaning that the full lanes will not be open until the summer at Montavista Avenue. So I apologize for that. I wasn't happy to hear, get that news from SBCTA, but I won't blame the SBCTA. It's been a very long journey with this contractor, and I'll leave that there. As Denise can attest to that, the last minute, she attended in closed session. Again, I'll leave that there. And finally, I just want to say this, that I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Obviously, we just had Hanukkah. Happy Hanukkah. And of course, a great 2024. You know, after going to Mydolo trip in Europe and, you know, being so close to problem areas, especially in Ukraine and the Middle East. And I really have a simple thing. I wish peace for 2024. Peace is greatly much needed. It's very much needed, you know, in Ukraine, with the wars going on there, and, and the Middle East, and Israel, and Gaza. Very much peace there, you want to wish. Sudan, you know, there's a civil war going Sudan. Peace that, you know, people not starving around the world. And frankly, also peace in our country because 2024 is going to be a significant year in terms of election. And I pray that we have peace in this election coming up and that we, as American citizens, make the right decision in who our president and who our elected officials will be in Washington, D.C. So with that, I will begin with, I'll begin with Councilmember Rue today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have several very good events in the city. In our region as well, there are plenty of things to see and do. When I hear residents say to me, oh, there's not a lot to do. I've said, we've had these events in the city, neighboring cities, whether you're in LA or San Bernardino County, you can go visit them, see them, tree lightings everywhere. So there's plenty to do in our region. Take advantage of it. This is a special time of year. And there's a quote that I enjoy at this time of year. Then I'll read something else. The quote is from G.K. Chesterton. He was a Christian philosopher, theologian, author. He wrote over 80 books. He said this on Christmas. "Christmas is built upon a beautiful and intentional paradox that the birth of the homeless should be celebrated in every home." And I concur with that. I have something, and every year I've tried to read something different. Sometimes it's the same. And this year, this is for life's forgotten on Christmas Eve. As we wrap presents, sing carols, and gaze at the glitter of boxes brave with bows under the glow of our well-lit tree. Let's pause and see all those down on their luck in a different light. Give the gift of recognition to the unappreciated, cherished forgotten heroes who are mistaken as losers. Let dreams come true for all those who need a break. Let there be laughter in all of this country's poor neighborhoods and forsaken places. Let nobody go to bed hungry or cold on this holiday. Let no policeman be shot, no child abused, no women battered, no infant born addicted to drugs. Write a song for all of the anonymous and hard-working people with grueling jobs who obey the law, pay their taxes, educate their children, never get into trouble, and struggle simply to make ends meet. Let no parent feel the torment of not being able to afford toys for their children. Give a second chance to somebody in trouble. Hire the guy who once went to jail but is eager to work, for Christ would have done so. Tell those who serve the public trust that their charge is to empower the weakest and least in our nation, and that our poor families are not a liability but an asset. Aplore them not to do, implore them to do for the last and the vulnerable, not the affluent. Remind them that theirs is to be duty, honor, and country before self-gain. Encourage the good ones to stay in public life and just keep telling the truth. Take some time to explain history to a college student so that he or she may appreciate artists with style who performed before their birth. Rent, rent them some films with Marilyn Monroe when she was funny. Let them see Grace in Motion with Fred Astaire and Ginger Rogers. Give them CDs by Diana Washington, Benny Goodman, and the young Frank Sinatra. Show them tapes of Jackie Robinson and Joe DiMaggio so they can see true class and style. Let us all light a candle to honor all victims of hate crimes and then commit to work against intolerance based on race, religion, lifestyle, and ethnicity. If you run into an old friend, tell them about the times you won and came out on top, not the times you lost. Thank them for being a friend when it really counted. Let some child who survived the foster care system grow up to write a novel about the coldest and dumbest bureaucracy. Give every young journalist copies of Edward R. Murrow so that he or she can study how integrity, moral intelligence, and irony can become poetry against a deadline. Put a rose on the tombstone of all those who died too young. Remember the life that should have been. Cure all compulsive addictions, whether it's drugs, alcohol, nicotine, or gambling. Let some scientists in one of our labs find a cure for all of the scourges of illness which threaten humanity. Let high school dropout discover the local library, fall in love with books, and become a teacher. Most of all, let us remember the holy family on their flight into Egypt. Make this a miracle Christmas for somebody here in a homeless shelter or for the immigrant just here from Middle East, Africa, Mexico, or some other distant homeland. Most of all, on this holiday, let the timid find confidence, the lost find a direction, the lonely find love, and our globe peace. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Rue, that was very nice. Councilman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On December 7th, which was a Thursday night about a week ago, 11 days ago, I, and I believe my colleague, Councilmember Martinez, also attended Supervisor Kurt Hagman's annual Christmas Open House event in Chino Hills, at Chino Hills City Hall. I would say there's about 100 guests, maybe 150 all total there, representing every school district, well, not every school district, but we had school district members, water board members, multiple water board members, council members from neighboring cities within the fourth district. Basically movers and shakers within the West End of San Bernardino County were there, and it was a good time had by all. Kurt always puts on a very well-attended and a very good event with some very delicious food and treats. So thank you, Kurt, for hosting that and inviting all of us within your district. The mayor mentioned former Chino Councilman Glenn Duncan's passing. And I had the privilege and honor of serving with Councilman Duncan when he was the president of the West Valley Mosquito and Vector Control Board, I believe, back in 2015 is when I started. He was president for about a year before he retired, and he stepped down from the council due at that, to that time with some serious health issues. And it's my understanding that perhaps those health issues finally took him. But nonetheless, that being said, the man fought for about six to eight years and didn't give up. But Glenn was very knowledgeable with respect to Chino's history. Of course, he was, at the time, many of you know, the area was dairyland down there. And he was, had a wealth of knowledge with respect to the history of the families of the dairies and how Chino and Chino Hills came about. He even had a hand in the battle between Chino and Chino Hills, the incorporation of Chino Hills, and then seeding from Chino's sphere of influence. And of course, he was advocating that Chino should still keep Chino Hills. As a matter of fact, I believe it was either him, it was him, because his wife Cindy would always say, Glenn would always say, it was Chino's hill instead of Chino Hills. It was Chino's hill. But nonetheless, Godspeed to Glenn. His thumbprint is eternal with respect to the West End and the valley. So my condolences to Cindy and his family. Pat King is another one, a former OMSD school board member, if I'm not mistaken. Or was he just the superintendent at one time? Yes. I met Pat in 1995. I was still in high school with long hair and earrings in my ears and fighting for, fighting against the closure of Margarita Elementary School at the time. That is where the current housing unit sits between, on Montavista and the 10 freeway. All those homes there used to be an elementary school that I had attended. And residents and I fought the closure of that school. Obviously, we lost that battle. But nonetheless, I met Pat King through that time. And as an 18-year-old, just fresh out of, an 18-year-old in high school or recently graduated, he actually had me and a few residents meet with him and the direct superintendent, Fred Koska at the time, or Frank Koska at the time, forgot what his first name was. But he said, you know, there's something about you, kid, that warrants a meeting. And so bring your concerned individuals, and you can be the leader, and you meet with us, and let's talk Margarita. And he called me kid, and every time I see him, even though it'd be my 20s and 30s and 40s as time went on, I was still kid, and that was the title he'd given to me. Xavier, thank you for coming to the podium and talking about Richard. It is appreciated. I, I think you, you did his service, you memorialized him well. And I don't think there could have been anyone more appropriate than someone from your department and knew him best. And I, I know mutual friends and relatives of his, like Rudy Gomez and all in the Montclair family, respected the man and appreciated him. So thank you for that, and I, I hope my schedule will allow, I'll see you at the service in a couple days. Mr. Mayor, with respect to the disappointing news you just threw upon us regarding the Montavista construction closure, or the completion date, since I live right there and I drive there every single day, could you please convey to them, one, that a lot of us residents are very grateful for the candlesticks that they put up to divert traffic going southbound Montavista, right lane that they go onto the freeway? However, we've seen individuals that simply don't give a damn, and they just going to plow through it and risk hitting someone as those of us on the left lane are continuing south to go to our respective places. If you could please have them replace those candlesticks. They were damaged today, and they're completely gone. If you can have SBCTA keep doing that, it'd be appreciated. Because those are appreciated with, with those of us residents in the area. I hear it all the time that that was a godsend. Thank you. Keep that traffic diverted instead of them merging without any warning into folks on the left. To staff, all of the staff, Merry Christmas to all of you. I know that most of you will be on break after Thursday or beginning Thursday and back at the beginning of the year. But to those listening and to those in the room, thank you for everything you've done day in and day out in your respective departments, dealing with the public in your respective fields. It is appreciated. I've always said that we are the small city that could, the little engine that could, but we're the small city that could on the West End. And the only reason why I can make that statement is because of folks like you. So thank you for that. You are appreciated. I, I pray you have a blessed time in the next two weeks that you're off with your family or friends or whatever. By all means, have some fun, and try not to do what Ed does and stay here. And I hope actually leave, Ed, I hope you do actually leave for some time for yourself and not be so glued to this building. And if you are here, I hope someone tells you to go home and, and enjoy your time off because it's deserved for the amount of hours you put in and slave over every detail for every item that comes before the city. But that said, while most of the staff can take time off, I, I know that police and fire cannot, and that's with every holiday. So to all of you gentlemen in the room, to all the officers that may watch later, I know a handful of them do, to the new ones we just welcomed tonight, thank you. we just welcomed tonight, thank you for your continued service and all the work that you have done with sometimes the limitations you're given, or hands behind your back, or whatever they might be. Thank you for your due diligence, officers. I don't forget, I don't remember the name, the names, for the thwarted heist, I guess if you will, of J.C. Penney the other day. Kudos to all of you. Thank you for that. I know that there's been a lot of unfortunate things that have happened in the city. Sometimes we get the briefings on them, and I think immediately that, thank God, none of our officers were hurt, at least maybe severely. I know maybe some have been over the time, but nonetheless, thank you for that, because you guys can't take off. And many times when officers do request time off, you guys step up and you cover for them. So thank you. Fire as well. I know fire is going through a tough time right now. Some folks are hurt, some are, some families are expanding as they have babies and they're having, getting time off, which is a good thing. But thank you to all the firefighters who work overtime and are answering those 911 calls for potential heart attacks and TCS, traffic collisions and whatnot. We appreciate it. And I know that you guys can't take off time as well during these next two weeks, but we appreciate it. And I know you guys know what you're getting into by virtue of your position, but it is, it's, it's not lost with me, and I am thankful and grateful for that. So please convey to your rank and file our thanks and our concern, and to all of you, Merry Christmas. And I guess we will, we will see you all next year. So thank you.
Mayor Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of comments. I wanted to say ditto to the comments that have been said about our staff. I'm always impressed by them. They are a well-oiled machine. I'm sure that has to do with their leadership, but the way things happen here in the city where it seems to me that our city staff, they seem to have a plan, and a backup plan, and a backup to the backup. So everything goes flawlessly, and so I really appreciate the entire city team for that. Then I would like to, as we move into the Christmas season, I would like to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, season's greeting, happy Hanukkah, Feliz Navidad, happy Kwanzaa. And for 2024, I wish you all great health and more prosperity than you can imagine.
Okay, we'll finish off with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. And I, I won't repeat how amazing the staff is, but we do have some incredibly hard-working staff, employees, and even volunteers in our city, and we're, we're very fortunate. You know, I saw firsthand this morning, they spent hours of their time organizing for the food and toy drive that's going to be tomorrow, and it is a lot of work. They did a lot of work, and it turned out beautifully, and tomorrow's going to go very smoothly and flawlessly. Police and fire were there representing. We had Montclair Place representing, other businesses from the city, in addition to the hard-working employees. And just a reminder to shop local. I know that's easier said than done, but if, you know, you aren't sure what to get people on your list, or aren't sure how to start with shopping local, you could, you know, reach out on social media, ask people what they do. There's probably authors you know that write books. Books are great presents. Art is great. Try to get creative and support the people in your community. And be safe. I see a lot of accidents around this time, a lot of flashing lights that I think are distracting, you know, maybe confusing with the, the red and green stoplights. So just be careful, be safe, have a wonderful holiday, and we'll see you guys in January.
Well, thank you very much. Again, we'll adjourn the memory of Richard Salazar, Dr. Anita Kalusk, if I said it correctly, then Glenn Duncan, Pat King, and of course, Sandra Day O'Connor. And on behalf of the city council, the staff, and you get back towards your staff, I know the folks who don't work are here right now, right? No, just joking. Just tell your staff that on behalf of the city council, we appreciate all the hard work you guys do. Seriously, you guys, the staff does a great job. Your employees do a great job, and just tell them thank you, on behalf of the city council. So we have minutes, many minutes in the agenda, and now we will go into closed session. Thank you.